I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here at the meeting tonight. If you haven't got your agenda or signed in over at the table to your last please do so. Um, I guess we're gonna start the roll call. So, councilperson Bentley?
Here.
Broad.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Wulffrom.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Town. Seven presents. And so the first on the agenda is to entertain a motion of a council member to be the chair and acting mayor for the meeting. So is there a motion?
I move that Councilman Flynn sits in the chair of the public council today, please.
Any other discussion?
It's for it.
Second. We spoke, all in favor?
Aye.
All votes? All in favor? Alright, there we go.
Might I move to the big chair then?
Yes.
Unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, um, I guess thank you. Not sure if this is an honor tonight or not, but we will try to get through the best that we can. I will alert those of you ahead of time, I have no experience pushing the button. So if it takes me a couple of minutes to get you three minutes and all of that, I apologize and it makes. There has to be a better way. We're invested. Uh, next up on the agenda then is to approve tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to add to tonight's agenda, Mr. Mankey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the first item is, uh, new business for Love Inc. of Hillsdale County charitable gaming license approval. Um, this was something that Josh had sent, well, had received today and sent over, um, in talking with representative from Love Inc. It is time sensitive, um, so we would like to add that to the agenda under new business, item C. And then the second item, um, is just communication, so it would be item D under communication. And, um, this is just to notify council that we have a FOIA fee appeal, um, for Caleb Ward. So at the next council meeting, um, we will actually have that on the agenda for discussion. But I need to officially notify you as part of the FOIA process. And so that would go as item D under communication.
So we have item D under communications, FOIA appeal for Caleb Ward, and a new business letter C, the request by Love Inc. for the, um, representation of a non-charitable or a nonprofit organization for charitable gaming licenses. Any other additions to tonight's agenda? Mister, could you, could you use your microphone, please, if you were to go forward?
Uh, what is a FOIA appeal? So they are appealing, um, being charged for their FOIA. Cause FOIA is based on the amount of time the city representative spends on procuring it, gathering it, um, in this case redacting it. And, uh, she feels that that, uh, amount is excessive.
Any other additions to tonight's agenda? Not an entertained motion? Councilman Soha?
Mr. Mankey, are these going to be included in the packet?
We can include them in the packet. I, I was just going to mention them when we open the public comment.
Well, I would just like the public to know, we have a letter from Mrs. Beshardan concerning Camp Hope, a letter for Groot Liner opposing the road diet, a letter from Derek Moore supporting the road diet. Ask the city to back that. And then I move to amend the agenda as the city manager suggested.
Okay, so a motion from councilperson Soha to amend tonight's agenda, the second from councilperson Morrissey. Any further discussion? Katie, do we need a roll call vote for somebody on that, or is that just a? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Many opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Next up on our agenda is the public comment. Now this is public comment strictly for items on tonight's agenda. You'll have a second opportunity to talk about anything your heart desires at the end of the meeting, but this is strictly for items that are on the agenda. I would ask that when you approach the podium, please give us your name and your address, as is so stated in the charter. Uh, that way then we know who you are, uh, just for record keeping and things of that nature. And I ask that you try your best, uh, to keep your comments to three minutes. When the beeper goes off, if you're coming to the end of the sentence, I'll let you finish, but if you find it going on for another four or five minutes, we are gonna have to cut you off because I have a feeling that we may have a few that want to speak tonight. So, uh, for the sake of brevity and moving things along, I would ask that you try to follow that three minutes as best as you can. Uh, Houston, Mr. Miller?
Uh, thank you. Mayor Pro-Town?
My wife wanted to call me Mayor Pro-Tent Town. Uh, we're not sure that's legal or not.
Uh, I would just like to suggest that, uh, since there does seem to be a lot of people interested in speaking, perhaps, uh, we invite those who have a time crunch to come forward early and the rest defer and wait a minute because this might take a minute. So.
I would think that we would just go ahead and keep it as first come, first served. Uh, again, we'll give you your three minutes, um, and we'll just kind of go from there. Appreciate the suggestion, but I, I don't know if that would really...
No, it's not worth it.
Right, so, uh, so I will officially open the podium, uh, for, uh, again, agenda items only at this time and three minutes only at this time. Mister?
Melissa Beshardan, Ward Three, 190 Ria Street. Um, I'm also here representing Hillsdale Community Thrift. First, the thrift store. I watched the public safety meeting held last month. I was shocked, disgusted, and felt threatened. Cindy Pratt approached me many, many, many months ago about the residents at Apple Run complaining to her. This would have been back when she was still on council. She appeared nonchalant about it, but wanted me to know. I have never said that I have an agreement with chief. I have also FOIA'd for that information to find out who else is saying that I had an agreement with chief. The only thing that is exactly, uh, what was stated at the meeting was that if they come across a homeless person, I am happy to help them, uh, because they don't have the resources either to take them anywhere, so I'm happy to help with that. Uh, let's see. It was stated that there is trash behind Apple Run from my campers or my staff. You're more than welcome to walk out there and look behind their property. There's no trash that's from us, but there is trash from past campers that used to be out there that had nothing to do with Camp Hope. As Mr. Soha stated, you have an email that's from Orkin. After I watched that meeting, I had Orkin immediately come out and, not to my surprise, but they couldn't find one, one rat dropping. Why? Because we've always taken preventative measures. But now we have to take extra preventative measures that says the three ladies, Cindy Pratt, Nancy, um, McCarty, and Debbie Taylor have stated that they have rats now at Apple Run. So now I have to take extra precautions because now they have rats. Uh, let's see. The slander and defamation of character demonstrated didn't fall on deaf ears. I have had two lawyers already reach out to me and represent me in the future case that I will have. You all should have a copy of that Orkin report, so if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Orkin. Uh, we have removed the bonfire area, the little campfire, four, three-foot thing, bringing that we had. Didn't know it was a problem until it was told at public safety. It's been removed. So as all of the seats have been moved to the other side of the tent. As far as marijuana goes, it's legal in the state of Michigan, and I can't help it if anybody at Apple Run smokes marijuana. I can't prevent that. My staffing campers will walk Carlton to avoid the twenty-plus-year path that people have walked to get to Kroger. But we can't stop others who still use that path to avoid the traffic on Carlton. Many people that walk from the, what would be the, the residential area, the, um, I can't even think of what it's called, the trailer park.
Right.
I can't prevent them from walking through.
I appreciate the intimacy. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Next. Again, three minutes, your name and, uh, address, sir.
Yeah, Joe Sinek, I've been caught before. Uh, I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the road diet plan. And, uh, my primary concern is that, um, money is fungible. Dollars that we spend on one project is money we can spend on something else. And anyone who says otherwise is pulling the wool over your eyes. There are ways of redirecting state funds, there are ways of redirecting county funds, local funds. A dollar is a dollar is a dollar. And I don't think at this point with the state of Hillsdale's infrastructure, this kind of project is wise. The perceived benefits don't outweigh the cost it's gonna have to the town in terms of disruption from construction, from the spending of, of our money, taxpayer money, whoever it was collected and distributed. So, you know, it's just, I, I look at the, the kind of crime that we have in the town. We have, you know, real problem with homelessness. We have a real problem with crumbling infrastructure. We have issues that I see on a daily basis that are not going to resolve. And then we see things that are completely extraneous to dealing with the main problems that government exists to solve. And the primary thing is to protect, um, protect us and to also maintain very, very basic, uh, infrastructure that we need. So again, I just, I don't see the utility in this project and I, and I want to voice my opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Your name and address, sir.
Uh, my name is Paul Ray. My address is ninety South Broad Street, uh, and I live in Ward Four. Now, living on Broad Street, I see what happens when people come through town. And sometimes they race into town. The road diet won't help that. They're coming off of a single lane, they'll go onto a single lane and keep driving at the same speed, about fifty-five miles per hour. If you're actually serious about slowing the traffic down, you need to put a light at Hallett and make sure it goes off every so often, so people will slow down for fear they're gonna have to stop their red light. I also walk downtown to go to church, and I walk downtown for other purposes. And I drive through downtown four times a day, as does my wife separately. All we need is more congestion downtown. And if you think that, that having only one lane going each way will help, you're wrong. It will make things considerably worse. People jaywalk all the time. There are three lights downtown. One at Bacon Street, one at McCallum, and one, uh, at the beginning of Carlton Road. So there are ample opportunities to go to a corner, punch a button, and walk across the street when it's legal. But lots of people jaywalk all the time. When I drove down here tonight, somebody was jaywalking. It isn't a problem. If you have congestion, however, it will be harder to jaywalk across Broad Street. So if you adopt this, what you're doing is taking something that works tolerably well, and you're making it a whole lot worse. And I can't see why the road diet will do any good for the city. I have read that it will help with the downtown businesses. Tell me how, if you make it harder to get across Broad Street. It seems to me this is not only a waste of money, it will do damage. And the particular damage that concerns me is I have a driveway. I'd like to be able to get out of the driveway in the morning. Well, there's congestion in the morning because people are coming into town. I like to get out of the driveway sometimes in the evening or at lunchtime. There's congestion. You make that congestion worse, it's going to be hard for me and for my family. I hope you vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your name and address, please.
Uh, hi, Liv Robson. I am, uh, currently at two oh five Mommy Street in Jonesville. I work at forty-five East Bacon Street in Hillsdale, and will be closing on a house in Hillsdale next week if we get back to town. I imagine I'll be receiving fewer claps from the crowd tonight. Um, in general, I'm in favor of the M ninety-nine road diet. And I'm not surprised that there is pushback against the project. Any pro, any public project is, is going to have friends and foes. Uh, but I am surprised by some of the statements made regarding the road diet. Uh, Councilman Bentley in particular, uh, has stated that the process leading up to this proposed diet was somehow not politically legitimate. I think that's unfair at best. Uh, the study leading to the road diet was commissioned by TIFA, which is a politically accountable body populated by the mayor. The concept of the road diet was approved several times unanimously by city council over a period of a decade. There have been multiple elections during that period, and it does not appear that the politically approved road diet was ever a major issue for the people of Hillsdale. In twenty fifteen, TIFA commissioned the study looking into the road diet among other issues. In twenty seventeen, TIFA adopted some of the proposals from that study, including the road diet. In twenty twenty-one, city council approved the idea of the road diet and incorporated it into its master plan, which has been publicly discussed several times and has been available on the city website for years. Finally, each year since twenty twenty-one, city council has approved the city staff to allocate and save money for the road diet project. The road diet is not a new issue, and it has not been hidden from anyone. It's interesting to wonder why this issue has become so politically charged today. The road diet was requested and approved by politically accountable representatives seven times, including four direct approvals by city council. The only time which has become an issue is now after the election of Councilman Bentley. November twenty-four, Councilman Bentley was elected, and it seems that prior to twenty-four, Councilman Bentley was simply not paying attention to local politics during the period in which the road diet was requested, designed, and approved. Otherwise, he may have raised an issue several years ago in the period which he alleged his council to have been a passive rubber stamp. It is only now after he's been elected that this has become an issue. And let's be clear about this. If the road diet as proposed is not passed, it is not as if Councilman Bentley does not want to make changes to M ninety-nine. He has discussed his own version of a road diet publicly and privately, as well as his own designs for a big beautiful corridor between Oak Street and McCallum, which would affect M ninety-nine. Councilman Bentley is not upset about the idea of making changes to M ninety-nine per se, but rather he is upset that he was not involved with this process which started over a decade ago. The road diet would be good for Hillsdale. It would benefit residents, businesses, and vehicles passing through downtown. Last Friday, there was another accident at Bacon and Broad involving a car trying to make a left turn. Earlier this year, a downtown resident's car was sideswiped by, on, in a hit-and-run, and then late last year, three parked cars were cut up by a road commission truck and then got, that got squeezed to the side of the road by a semi. All these incidents would have been prevented or mitigated by the proposed diet. Hillsdale does not need a four-lane highway cutting through town. Please pass the road diet as proposed.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, please, Eric.
Mayor Pro on one thirty-eight Hillcrest Drive, Ward One. I want to preface my statement by stating, our family owns, uh, various businesses in Tecumseh and Adrian, Michigan, which recently went through, um, road diet, uh, plans in their downtown business district. But specifically, I wanted to comment today on a, uh, opinion piece I read on Subsec by, um, Councilperson Matt Bentley, uh, titled "Opinion: Say No to the Road Diet." Uh, and I'm just quoting this, but one line here. "They did not request to have the major RV through-town arbitrarily constricted for the imagined benefit of an arrogant few, who mean to impose their vision of a bright, beautiful, boutique future." This is without arbitrary. The city hired planners and civil engineers to study and collect traffic data and advice based on their knowledge, expertise, and experience. These firms are full of degree, planners, and licensed civil engineers who dedicate their lives to improving cities and roads. It's all they do. These are not imagined benefits. They are observable, measurable, and validated benefits from over two decades of road diet projects in the state of Michigan. They include greater walkability, safer parking, traffic calming, and less accidents. The viability of a downtown business district is defined by its walkability and safe parking. I am not concerned about semi trucks, uh, uh, taking more time to pass your seat. When referring to the arrogant view, not sure who he is referring to, as a downtown business and building owner, am I one of those arrogant view? To me, arrogance is believing in your point of view to the exclusion of validated examples of municipalities that have implemented successful road diets through their respective communities. Did Mr. Bentley reach out to any communities that have implemented a road diet? Did he ask any questions about the benefits to those communities? I know that Rob Soha did, and without exception. He stated in a previous meeting here, every one of them was happy with their road diet projects. Imagine that, batting a thousand percent. No one's ever gone back in Michigan. And yet somehow, Matt Bentley has the audacity to think that he won't be, uh, that it won't or cannot work in Hillsdale. Now remind me, who is the arrogant one? I want to voice my support for this road diet project and the M dot grant that will fund it.
Thank you, Eric. Name and address, sir.
Adam Bentley, Ward Two, uh, lifelong, part-time resident and current permanent resident at two West Montgomery Street, Hillsdale, Michigan. Um, good evening all. I'm Adam Bentley, son of Matthew, and one of your recent appointees to the cemetery board. The cemetery board is my priority in local politics, but I am here tonight to give a few thoughts on the road diet. I grew up in Ann Arbor, Michigan, over twelve years, and witnessed firsthand during that time the development of Ann Arbor's infrastructure from what was normal to what is now a miserable experience for anybody trying to get anywhere there. Ann Arbor is a pain to navigate by foot, bicycle, motorcycle, and car alike. The road castration that the state of Michigan implemented in Ann Arbor has served only to make its transit extremely unpleasant. I hope to inspire you to vote against the road diet tonight lest the same unfortunate fate befall Hillsdale. The real reason we are considering bike lanes is because M dot won't give us a tap grant without them. That's my understanding. Wheelchair accessibility, child extrication buffers, and car door opening lanes are silly ideas that have been used to try to justify bike lanes retroactively. None of this constitutes the issue at hand, the neglect of the will of the people, and that is the real issue here. Not just the bike lanes, but what the bike lanes have revealed, which is that this council has been neglecting to act on behalf of the will of the people. This is a tragedy for the city, and I hope that this contentious issue can serve as a catalyst for change in the way the city is administered. We are not alone in this endeavor, um, to refute a previous comment. Uh, business owners in Coldwater have expressed their discontent over the road diet that was imposed upon them without their consent. And the city council of Williamson, outside Lansing, in which we have friends, uh, who have an identical situation to ours with M fifty-two passing through their city center, put in the requisite effort to resist the road diet, and won. It can be done. So I implore you all to make that same effort here on behalf of the people that actually live in this city. If the city is to be changed, it ought to be done with adequate input from the people that live in it. The people do not consent to the road diet. The arguments in its favor are silly, the direct consequences extremely unpleasant for anyone who uses Broad Street, and the greater implications about the relationship between this council and its constituency dire. Thank you all for your careful consideration. I hope today marks the beginning of a new and improved consensual relationship between the people and the council. And finally, in my last thirty seconds, I would like to add that, um, people in Oseo don't know this is happening. People in the Ashedawet community don't know that this is happening. And so when we say, so, you know, I don't know that political legitimacy was the contention made by my father. I don't, I mean, if you said that, I mean, didn't. But, um, what we mean is that people that use Broad Street on a daily basis for their commute were not properly consulted, were not properly included in this process whatsoever throughout the decade that it's supposed to be going on. Thank you very much.
Name and address, please.
Cindy Pratt, forty-one, Apple Run. Apple Run has been there forty-plus years. We've had rats the last two years. Camp Hope has been open. They were down cleaning today. I'm sure it's cleaned up real nice. But we've had rats go under a dry vet and get into a resident's laundry room. I hope they close. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Karen Lacy, sixty-four, Apple Run. I'm actually surprised that, um, somebody could come up from Apple Run and then be shot down with, uh, an opposing opinion. So with that being said, I think that we have every right to voice our concerns. And I'm just a new tenant there going on a year. And I've budded up against the woods in one of the buildings. So she can't control everybody, and homelessness is a sensitive topic to begin with. But I think that Apple Run's residents have a right to have a little bit of sense of security. Because right this summer, I'm out there trying to decorate my patio. I look over into the woods and there's a man urinating on a tree. So I want to dispel anybody that come up here and say those are only rumors because I actually seen it, and I thought, well, I'll give them grace. You know, because I, I knew that there was a homeless shelter there before I ever rented the apartment. I'm not against having a shelter, but let's do it legally and quit extending to be, I mean, how can you support a shelter that keeps getting extended zoning? You know, it's like, how much farther are you gonna go under the law to allow that? And I feel like we are being attacked because we have to, you know, we have a difference of opinion. That doesn't mean we hate the homeless. They, we do have a lot of established businesses, Salvation Army, food banks at the churches. We have Saint Peter with the healthcare. We have, I'm hoping that anybody that stays at that homeless is assigned a case manager to help them out, you know. But she is not the only one that is saving the homelessness. We have a lot of well-established, legal, legally-run businesses that can help somebody with homelessness. So I, I just wish that we could, as adults, differ in our opinions and not, like, attack everybody. I just want you to make, to make you aware that we also want a sense of security too. Like when I first moved in, it was very loud music, and I'm thinking, once again, give them grace. Who doesn't like music? You know, but if we were to play it at that extent, we're gonna have our fellow neighbors calling on us. So you need site management if you're gonna run a homeless encampment. You have to have site management there. You have to have security. Because a lot of people say, well, that's not, you know, I'm glad they're there and it's not in our, their, their backyard, but it is in our backyard. So that's just what I wish to impart, that we don't attack each other, but we come to a, a legal solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Spence, forty-two.
Just a second, sir. Okay. Name and address, please.
Howard Spence, sixty, Apple Run, Ward Two. Apple Run's a quiet community. It's made up of basically older citizens. Some of them are real close to be senior citizens. Some of us are over that. We don't want to hear the music. We don't want to hear the, the campfires going, the big parties get going, there's nobody around to charge down there. I've had two incidents since a year and a half that happened to me personally. First one was about one o'clock in the morning. I was up watching TV. I heard this banging around. I went out and looked. There was a bicycle, a backpack laying on the ground by the dumpster, and a young man in the dumpster asked him what he was doing. He was very apologetic, said, you know, just trying to earn a living, and I suggested that there were lots of jobs out there. Didn't respond, got out of dumpster, rode his bike, went down mechanic. The most recent one was actually somewhat spooky. About ten o'clock at night, I'm watching TV as usual. I hear my phone door open. I'm not expecting anyone. Next thing I know, someone's jiggling my doorknob. I went right to the door, opened it up. The guy's standing there with a little backpack, head and toe dressed in black, immediately turns back to me and asks me if he belonged there. I said, no, you don't, what do you need? He didn't say anything, just walked out, walked down mechanic. Five hours later, I'm outside having a cigarette, and I see him pacing back and forth on the mechanic, on the care drive there. I didn't say anything to me, to him, he saw me, and then he went back down care of mechanic. At that point, I called the police because that's just too suspicious for anybody's age. They both, two patrol officers showed up, I told them what had happened, what I described the guy asked, and they seemed to know who he was. One of the officers immediately went down mechanic towards the camp. I'm assuming that's where they were headed. Didn't have any more problems after that. We like it quiet, we don't need problems, we don't need rats, we don't need music playing at all hours, we don't want to smell the campfire. A campfire is for state parks and campgrounds, not a parking lot. As long as they're not managed to not follow the rules down there, paying their fines, whatever they have to do to stay, you know, in code. If you guys, if they request that becoming a permanent settlement down there, then they're going to have to change the zoning code. If that's not changed, and they don't get it approved, are they still going to do the same thing? Because basically, they're just blowing you off, they're pretty much giving everybody on the council and the city the finger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Your name and address, sir.
John Novak, 1769 Almeida Drive, Montecarlo Township. I have some comments about this road diet. So I've been in logistics for about 20 years. My degree is in mechanics, I have a master's in digital marketing as well. So it surprises me that you guys have been working on this for almost a decade, and basically, terrible statistics. When I was looking up MDOT's official statistics, I found that the volumes are just too high for a two-lane road with a third being a terminal. Because you can't maneuver, commercial trucks can't maneuver. There's no way to pass, there's no way to get around, you're just stuck. So I would like it if people on Broad Street could get out of driving this because it won't happen. So did anybody consult, like, maybe some of the trucking companies around here? They use M-99 on the way in, on the way out? Jonesville's doing a road diet plan, possibly? So we're sandwiching an industrial park that we've been trying so hard to sell the city with no way out, no way in. Also have to question these bike lanes really. Have you guys ever ridden a bike beside an 18-wheeler? It's not a comforting thing to do. It's a big vehicle. And if you think that trucks move and people bounce into it, they don't. They just run over. So you're adding more risk, not less. You're not slowing traffic, you're stopping traffic. And you're also stopping like a non-vehicle. So I want you to keep this stuff in mind. I actually think this road diet could be a good thing, but you've got to get a way for commercial traffic to go around the downtown area unheeded and unimpeded. Put in some traffic lanes, it's going to be four-lane around the road. I would recommend M-99 go to the four lanes back to, what is it, 34? That's where the traffic really drops statistically speaking, if you look at the website. So what do we need to do going forward? You need to update the data. The road diet was, the study was done on December 20th. So right before Christmas, really? Traffic at its lowest. You've got 1,500 college students about a quarter mile from here that are all gone. Even if you take 35%, say, on cars, it's a lot of cars. They're not counting the census, you've got to keep this in mind. We might have differences with college at times. You know, I've certainly seen that in the years that I've been here. Doesn't mean that we can ignore the people that are here from the college.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Your name and address, sir.
Joshua McSeal, 31 and a half North Broad Street. My wife and I own and operate St. Joe's across the way here. We also live here in downtown. We have two children, spend a lot of time walking and driving from our apartment to the business, back and forth and all around. While all aspects of the road diet might not be perfect, we are in favor of it. I think it will add a lot of safety for the people who have to take children out of their cars. It will allow passengers to gather car, unload groceries, unload things for the business, talk to my customers, they're also in favor of it. And also talk to other residents and downtown business owners. They're in favor of it. And it will help the economy in downtown if more folks can have easier access to the businesses in town. And I think it will increase the social life for folks again who move around a lot to and from. That would be the worry about traffic, driving right up past their cars at a high speed. Noise is another concern. You know, considering outdoor seating, having to sleep right next to M-99, I think narrowing down to a two-lane highway and slowing down the traffic will keep the noise down, especially right at the intersection of Bull Carlton and Broad Street where people accelerate coming up the hill at a pretty high speed. It's just very unpleasant for customers and for residents. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Jeff, name and address, if you will.
Jeez, my name is Jeff. 126 State Street. The road diet, I've been here long enough now, and I know some of you have as well, where this has changed five times. It used to be the line drove through, we came on this side of the freeway per se, now it's over here. I think, looking at an economic aspect, it's $200,000 being put towards the roads. Everybody says the roads, the roads, the roads. We continue to give money to other projects and don't do the roads. I know there's two we're doing this year potentially. I know there's one being done right now that's looking really good. Economic aspect of this, to slow people down, what do most places do? We spend $2.2 million for a police officer. Write tickets. Set them at the end and say, you're going too fast, pull them over. Revenue, beautiful. Slows people down, you don't spend a million dollars. And I know you can't stop accidents. I've been a victim at my old office of a smashing, smashing run with a fair trailer that came through and hit my car. I've seen people open their doors and get them slammed. But again, I think these things are going to continue to happen. I think what's going to end up happening is right into three lanes. If one of you were in front of me and you guys are going too slow, what am I going to do? In today's world, I'm going to go right around you and treat that as a passing lane, not as a terminal. I see it all the time, different places I travel. People are not like they used to be, where they're patient. They're going to get irritated and go around, and are going to have no problems. So that's what I have, I'm saying no to this because I think we can take that money and put it in other places and be able to use that resource for the roads in other places. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Name and address, sir.
Steve Veer, 275 West Bacon. I have a business on 29 North Broad Street. And my two main contentions about this is using any TIPA money at all because I believe it's also illegal to use TIPA money that is not in the TIPA. And you're talking about going all the way down the end of Fairgrounds. The other issue is Cook Street. I looked at the proposal to kick the driveway out the side on Bacon, but that, I think, will create more backups for anybody coming from the north trying to get through that driveway, stopping traffic as they turn right, they go left, but traffic stopped there for the life. Those are basically my two biggest contentions. Because when I did a TIPA project recently, the TIPA fund only funded $6,000 of a $20,000 project. Now, that was all they could do for the whole year for everybody, and we're the ones that are paying the TIPA fund, it's business owners in downtown TIPA. And those are the main contentions I have with it. As far as the road diet, I've had mirrors taken off. I think it's a 50/50. I don't think it's going to really slow traffic down unless there's a lot of traffic. I think it's going to continue to speed through there. It does give you room to open your doors. But again, I, it's kind of 50/50, and I think the money can be better used in other local roads in the area rather than on Broad Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Pony is still open, if anybody would like to speak. Name and address, young lady, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Wolfram, I live at 3 Corona Circle. But I'm also involved with the Don Theater. So my concern about Broad Street is just how busy and dangerous and noisy it is in front of the Don Theater. So I, I drive there a lot, I'm trying to get out of my car there a lot, trying to unload things, and it's just always dangerous. I think the road diet, I'm in favor of it. I think it would provide room on either side. If you don't like the word "bike lane," you could just call it a buffer zone because that's what it'll be, it'll just give people extra room. I want to back up though, I know Councilman Bentley's concerned about kind of how this has gone through. I have followed it from the beginning, but I want to back up all the way to 1994 when our beautiful little city was put on the National Register of Historic Places. So there was a study done, it had to be submitted to the National Park Service, and it got approved, and all of downtown Hillsdale is a commercial district on the National Register. So I just want to read a few little things from that report because it speaks to the beauty of our downtown. It starts, Hillsdale's a typical Michigan county seat city, located geographical center of Hillsdale County, blah, blah, blah. Its success is due to its being the county seat, the routing of the Michigan Southern Railroad through the town, selection as the site of Hillsdale College. This is the interesting statement. "The business district retains 19th and early 20th century brick business blocks nearly in entirety. The downtown district is dominated by a prominent courthouse and a central square, steeple churches, formal civic and governmental buildings." So it's speaking to the beauty of our little downtown. Also, it talks about plating, the original plaque, which was done in 1839, and it included Broad Street, plated at 99 feet. And it, in some conception, it talks about, you know, kind of wondering, why was that? They don't know. It was following the St. Joe River. It was much later that the state made M-99 a state highway. Our downtown was intact before it got kind of made into a highway breakthrough. Then there was a study by Notre Dame School of Architecture in 2021. So this had nothing to do with the PIG TIPA study. They came into town with their graduate students to do just sort of an architectural assessment. They said, "The historic center of the city of Hillsdale is characterized by iconic civic buildings and commercial district. Cutting through this district is M-99, which brings excessive noise and traffic. In order to create a pedestrian-friendly historic center, this proposal redesigns the street state of M-99." So they, they had a different plan, but they also thought something should be done about M-99. I urge you to vote for the road diet.
Thank you, Mary. Next, please. Name and address, sir.
Scott Sessions, 102 Cold Springs Circle. My main concern is safety with the road diet. I'm not totally convinced that the road diet is completely safe. I do not like how close the bike lane is to the traffic. Even though there would be a buffer lane added, I would still be worried that a car opening up their door would not see a bicyclist coming and hitting them, knocking them down, and even pushing a bicyclist into the lane of traffic after hitting them with their door. I'd be very upset with myself, and I wouldn't want to have this on my conscience if I was on city council and voted yes on this road diet and then had a bicycle accident due to my vote of changing the road diet, of changing the road. For this concern I have spoke about, I would ask that city council vote against the road diet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sessions. Nathan Anderson.
Isaac Kirschner, 43 Main Street. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just have a few thoughts. I work up in the legislature in Lansing, so we deal with a lot of local municipalities, these sort of issues. They're happening all over the place, it's not just Hillsdale. But something when dealing with issues is that there's, you know, contentious issues and there's like 80/20 issues, right? Things like deportations of illegal aliens, you know, keeping banned the sports, these things which are entirely popular across the constituency. And the road diet has brought strange bedfellows together against it, right? Different parts of Hillsdale, very diverse parts of Hillsdale are opposing it. I mean, I understand that people do support it, but the main issue, I understand, is the bike lanes. I like parts of it, I want it protected left northbound from Carlton to Broad. I think that's great, you know. But the bike lanes being the contentious issue, I understand passing something like this despite these bike lanes, but let's understand that we're repaving a road which people have driven on for decades, and I'm not sure what sort of traffic accidents will be caused by that. I'd also like to talk about maybe a lot of the anger that's coming from people in Hillsdale. Bureaucracy is a funny thing because, you know, no one's responsible and there's no one to blame. And so you're generally mad at all of you or Mr. Mackey, right? I think the city staff do their job. I think it's a very difficult thing to work in a city to get something like this going. And as far as people being in the dark about this process just going over for 10 years, I mean, because of the way these meetings work, they largely have been in the dark whether it's not coming to meetings, or it's not in front of their face all the time. So I understand listening to the city staff and to the city manager on their expertise, but then when this final project is presented to the people and they wholeheartedly reject it, I don't understand continuing with it, at least in its current form. And I understand that this comes once every 10 years, and you feel maybe a great sense of urgency to pass this today, but I've been hearing that, you know, litigations are in the wind. So I would never, I don't understand supporting something which is overwhelmingly popular, unpopular, rather, so just hope for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Jeffrey O'Neil, 173 Hillsdale Street. I spent the majority of the last four years in Hillsdale, and granted, I am just a student here. So admittedly, I don't have as large of a stake in these proceedings as full-time residents. With that said, on the flip side, you can be assured that I'm just here to call the balls and strikes. And the fact is that I'm here because when I heard that the city was planning on adding bike lanes, my mind went straight to the one-week fare. And what a nightmare that these bike lanes would cause to this one-week proceeding. This would cause the city severe revenue issues during that time. And for that reason, I would advise all of you to vote against this suggestion vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Sure. Jill Hartway, 157 Oak Street. I just have some specific questions if I may. Mr. Soha, can you tell me what communities you were discussing with those business owners?
Jill, this is just kind of a new question, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just a little concerned that we have not, as previously stated, the community has heard about this. When you've got just three bullet points in summaries and articles, it doesn't give you the full scope and sequence as to what's going on. The previous comment tonight, who is paying for this specifically? How is this $200,000 getting paid? If we can't use TIPA funds, who is going to pay for this? The taxpayers? Because we can't pay for the roads. So for that reason, I am adamantly opposed to this. I'm also looking at very noticeable accidents this evening in Mr. Paladino. And I think that it's a little ironic that he isn't here tonight for this very, very important vote. And you will have your quorum, but it'll be interesting to see how this turns out considering he's not there, or he's not here this evening. And also, I did walk the sidewalks in Coldwater. And of all of the people that I spoke with face-to-face, none of them are happy with the road diet in downtown Coldwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Next, please. Next, please.
CJ Tyne Craig, 22 Green Avenue, Hillsdale. Um, the only question that I have, um, because I, I see benefits, I'm excited about parking. I, I, just get some parking, whether you do the diet or not. Um, and I hope you don't vote for it because there, there's so many concerns that I have. But the one thing, when I was at one of the meetings, MDOT said that they could not lower the speed limit. And I went, "Oh, okay." And then I drove through Jonesville. And Jonesville is a state road, is it not? Isn't 12 a state road? It's 30 miles an hour through Jonesville. Why can't we make it 30 miles an hour in Hillsdale? And alleviate some of the problems that we have going on? I, I don't, MDOT needs to answer that. Like, why can they not lower the, the speed limit? That's my only thing I wanted to say.
Thank you, CJ.
I'm Mary Trapp, Lane Bud Road. I'm neither here nor there for this. Uh, when you come into town at the Fairgrounds, the speed limit is 35. When you get up to the fair office, it turns to 30. When you get out to Burger King, it turns to 40. So it is 30 down through town, except when there's construction for the last month here because they're trying to run a sewer line and it takes a month to do that. Um, I did come down here at the corner, made a left turn. There was a big motorhome in front of me. Of course, he stayed in the center lane as I dropped over into the right lane. Uh, stayed beside him running 30, 35 mile an hour all the way out to Burger King. When I dropped over to make a left turn into Kroger's, and of course, he's still there in his left lane, he decided it was a good idea to honk his horn at me. Which I guess he doesn't understand, the left lane is not a driving lane. It's for passing or turning only. It's not a through-town traffic lane. Uh, that being said, I wish that, um, council members on this side would read the thing in front of them by the mics so they would actually speak into the mics like they're supposed to or should. So when you watch it online, you can actually hear what they got to say. Um, the other thing I had to say was, back in January, Mr. Mackey, and I'm gonna say he was kind of speaking out of turn, but he was trying to give one of the council members a chance to abstain from voting, which it went way over his head. And then he said, made his comment, which he's not supposed to comment because of the conflict of interest.
Jay, I, I would ask that you keep it to, uh, agenda items this first time around.
This is from minutes from the council meeting, but that's, I'm done. Hopefully, he understood.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Your name and address, sir.
Richard Smith, 63 South Broad Street. When I'm coming north from the Fairgrounds to my driveway, I turn my turn signal on somewhere around South Street or Indiana Court to make my hand turn into my driveway. I slow down to approximately 15 miles an hour, and inevitably, I will see someone on my bumper. Fact is, I've even seen the Hillsdale City Police on my bumper, hoping that they'll turn into the inside lane and pass me. Most of the time, thank God, if they don't, they do stop and let me turn into my driveway. Now, this TIPA thing, I don't know how they got involved with the roads. I never understood this TIPA money anyway. I think they wasted a lot of it. But, uh, I, I've talked with my neighbors, my neighbors, and all of them say, "Road diet? What's that? Is that some kind of Japanese thing or something?" I think that's where that diet came from. Uh, in a way, uh, speed has always been a problem on Broad Street. 1957, I graduated from Hillsdale High School. Our seniors, for something to do during lunch hour, we went out and helped Harold Hawkins check out speed control devices at Hallock Street. We very quickly taught him that if speed control devices didn't work because we could tear them apart in a few seconds. So that all happened. At that time, they had five policemen, and they did a pretty good job controlling speed limits in Hillsdale. Now we got three times that much and they don't do a very good job. A, a speed device at Hallock Street, the light would probably help. No blinking lights. The blinking lights have caused accidents. We've had people seriously injured at Bacon and Broad at 5 o'clock in the morning when there're blinking lights because they think they go 70 miles an hour through Hillsdale with blinking lights on a motorcycle. Don't work. Uh, I have here a petition signed by 18 people that are against the road diet. Uh, somebody said, "Well, the people from Osseo and Jefferson, they don't know anything about road diets either." But, uh, 11 of them, scientists, they don't want it because they don't want to drive through Hillsdale and have to worry about pedestrians or whatever and, and, and on two lanes of road. Uh, five of them are from Ward 4, and those five people from Ward 4 have never, when I asked them about road diet, they was, "What is that?" They're my neighbors. "What is that?" Now, you're saying, pardon?
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. If you would, um, if you'd like to take that petition and hand it over to Katie.
Yep.
She will make it an official record of that. So thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Name and address, sir.
Act 368, H. Street. Um, members of the City Council, I hope by now you've heard the people's will and fulfill your obligation as elected representatives of the people. This is not particularly for those of you associated with college to apply American principles of representative democracy to, um, that you, members of the Council, I'm sure hold. I've made my position abundantly clear that I and the people stand against this road diet. I have several friends who are unable to be here tonight asking me to let y'all know they stand against it as well. Um, additionally, the study that was presented Thursday, where they talked about the number of accidents that happened, um, in, on the road in question over the past year or two, quoted, I think it was 24, 25, somewhere in the mid twenties. Um, I since looked at the numbers, and 13 of those happened in winter. And my understanding is that the cause of the accident was, uh, reported to be poor clearing of the snow from the roads. Uh, so I think that might skew the numbers just a bit when we're talking about accidents happening on the road, and the road diet might be helping with that. Um, many of the people I've talked to have stated grave opposition to this plan in the local community. Uh, whenever they find out about it, they're against it, they don't want it. And they, I know it's been a topic that's come up quite a bit. People weren't really aware of it, particularly in the other outlying towns. Um, and I think probably a little bit due to the way people's attention spans have gone these days, but also I think a lack of, um, publicizing this project. Um, um, I just wanna say, I think we've made our voices abundantly clear. And I really hope that y'all will listen to the people and vote down this road diet. Thank you.
And thank you, sir. Anybody else? Podium's done. Anybody else like to speak on agenda items only at this time? Name and address.
Temple Presto, Ward 4. Everybody's talking about growth and bringing people into the city and everything like that. A fair brings a fair amount of people into the city. And if you do this, that fair is probably not gonna last any more years. It's already on the decline, and it's making it decline faster. Some of the biggest businesses in this community, Martinrea, now you have Myers, Aldi's, you got Kentucky Fried Chicken coming in. I can tell you right now, the one reason Martinrea bought SKD was because of location and the easy access for trucks in and out. That's the only reason. The centralized location, easy access in and out. Meyer wouldn't have built here if you got a road diet in Jonesville and you had a road diet in Hillsville. But trucks are not gonna like coming through there. Martinrea could close. They have the building, they could close that building within two years. If they come across the, uh, the building not getting trucks in and out on a timely manner, it probably will happen. We talk about growth. This, if anything, is a stop of growth. You have the train coming, what, three, four times a year now? They're not complaining that they need a road diet. We got 400 people coming in on the weekend on that train when it comes. If they thought they needed a road diet, that many people wouldn't be on the train. I don't think the road diet will solve the problems that, uh, the people are being told. And you're gonna have to create more, and you're gonna lose growth, and you're gonna lose economics. Thank you.
And thank you, sir. Anybody else at this time want to speak on agenda items only? Seeing done, we will close the podium. I would like to thank everybody for their comments this evening. Thank you very much. Next up is our consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda. We have approval of bills, uh, claims of May 29th for the city and the BPU, payroll of May 22nd, payroll of June 5th, city council minutes for our last meeting in June 2nd, finance meeting in June 2nd, the minutes from that, minutes from the public safety meeting on May 22nd, and a number of BPU items. And Dave, I would ask you this time, I know it's just a consent agenda, but would you take a quick second and, and go through the six or so, um, BPU notes real quick?
Sure. Jake, do you wanna come up since you're here? Why don't you? It's all right. But, uh, and just to kind of give, um, your fresh counsel, historically, the BPU board has approved their own items. Um, but several years ago, council wanted them brought in front of council just to so that they knew, um, about the items that were familiar with them. So we, um, the mayor at the time, um, had a stock for requesting that they put on the consent agenda. So that's the plan we've done this. But Jake, do you wanna talk about your items and then we can add any?
Certainly. Um, my two items are in regard to the, uh, industrial substation construction project that we started a couple of years ago. Um, we're probably eight, nine hundred thousand into it at this point. Um, this is the next stages to, uh, put together the slabs, the conduits, and all the conductor to make these components work that we've already put down payments on. Uh, we're expecting our switchgear to arrive, uh, early fall, late summer, so soon. Uh, we'll need to put that, we'll need a slide to put that on. We intend on temporarily feeding it with the existing transformer. Um, that, uh, that transformer will not be here until late 2026. I guess I wouldn't be shocked if it slid in early '27, so there's still a couple of years left to finish this project. But ultimately, what we're doing is creating, uh, excuse me, creating extra capacity, reliability, and redundancy on our electric system that will allow us to have multiple ways to feed our, our entire system, I guess is the truth of the matter. Um, without going into too much more detail, I guess I'll take questions if anybody had any.
All right, then I will, um, answer some of the other items here. So the Millsoft licenses, licensing is for software, for outage management, uh, software. The wastewater served by an operator contract is a contract with a former director to hold his license for Hillsdale on the wastewater side as we do not have another licensed candidate, um, within the department as of yet. Uh, we have one that will be tested this fall. So the idea is, um, that once he is, that test is passed and we have that certification, um, which was required by the state, then, um, then Mr. Guyer's license will no longer be needed. Um, we did explore other options with firms and agencies that provide that licensing, and, um, there was just such a need out there that it wasn't available to us. GPS, um, is a, just a, uh, goal positioning system that we use for our mapping system. And then, um, the BPU personal committee report is for your committee, uh, their upcoming investment question.
I appreciate that. Um, the reason I ask, the council's kind of curious. I, I just kind of wanted the public to know that the BPU is doing a lot of things to keep your lights on. Um, with DTE and consumers' energy getting a lot of publicity, and now consumers wants to ask for a substantial rate increase again, just to cut feelings. Um, I wanted everybody to kind of know this was in our agenda, but also know occasionally, maybe to the BPU meetings, that our public utility is working to avoid as many outages as possible. And, um, it's all budgeted, and they're working very hard to keep your lights on. I just kind of wanted to highlight that, that this is what some of this is for.
It's a lot of money, but it's budgeted, it's in our rate structure that we do when those are evaluated and multi-yeared. It's all put together as part of that.
Appreciate Jake. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. So that gets us through the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
We have, uh, a motion from Councilman Morrissey to accept the consent agenda as presented, segmented by Councilman Soha. Any further questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor and it's passage, signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.